Are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay, well, good then, we'll move on to the agenda. The first in reports is Board Goals and Action Update.
All right, well, we'll go right down in order, so we'll ask Mr. Rose to start, because the first item is the superintendent's search.
Okay, well, next week is it. Next Friday is the deadline. Right now, we have thirteen applications, which is good. But I expect, being, next week is the final week, I expect we're going to get several more. I have been in personal contact with several very good candidates, and their applications are coming in next week. So I anticipate we'll have over twenty. And that's good. When I started, I asked Anita Murphy, how many should I expect? She said thirteen, which shocked me at first. So if we get over twenty, that's more than what other districts are getting. And I don't have those applications of the really good candidates I've been encouraging yet. But I expect that I do, and if I do, you will have probably five or six good finalists. So that's the good news. I think the second meeting in January, I need to hijack, because the board and I need to sit down, and we need to go through paperwork. I will have made some site visits by that time. We'll talk about the finalists, and we need to talk about the process from that point forward. So I'm requesting that in your planning, you either take that meeting, just set it aside for this purpose, or at least take an hour or two of that night and set it aside for this purpose.
Is there any questions? I'd like to entertain a motion to make our second meeting of January, a meeting with Dick and just the board members to discuss the hiring process for super. Is that agreeable?
A second, and then you can talk.
Agreed. Any discussion?
Will that be the entire meeting? So we'll be at an executive session for that whole meeting?
So I think, part of my question is, are you, you are gonna forward the several best, or all of the information, or it doesn't really?
I will be narrowing the field down to the obvious, five to seven best. And that's not hard to do. If you did that, any group, they're gonna come up with those same ones. Then we should look long and hard at those five, determine how they fit. And as I said, hopefully, I will have made some site visits to some of those.
So, a follow-up of Chris's question, does that mean you're gonna be bringing that information at that meeting? Or will you be giving it to us ahead of time to look at?
That will be the first time you will see paperwork on those candidates.
That's what I was asking, I just wanted to clarify.
Because of the conventional nature of the search, there are some sitting superintendents who want to apply, which is good. But they had told me that they can't apply if it gets back to the board they're applying, and so on. Things are going good, and they just don't want to create that sort of disturbance. So, and I have promised them that I will not let their names out until they are a finalist. And then at that point, I will call them and say, now's the time, you either gotta cut bait or whatever.
Just for the benefit of our people here tonight, hiring a super is really the most important thing that the board is empowered to do. And I think it's really important, even though we might sacrifice a public meeting, to really get a chance to, you know, spend whatever time you need to really, you know, get the process going, be the best possible possible. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, so the second meeting in January will be a meeting with Mr. Rose to consider the superintendent's search. All right, can you continue?
Thank you.
Under the area of safety, some members of our threat assessment team attended a training on threat assessment sponsored by our insurance carrier, Utica National. So that was very helpful in putting together the rest of the packet, or the rest of the protocol. The, we are trying to put together and find safety the district policy committee to meet, because we will need a threat assessment policy to support the work of the committee. We also have restorative practices happening at the high school. There was a book study. You have a happy holidays gift, a copy of the Restorative Justice in Education book, that some members of the high school faculty who are interested and volunteered to do so are part of that book study. At the December faculty meeting, there was some article reads around the idea of restorative practices. And quite a few members of the building leadership team will be participating in an upcoming conference on restorative practices. I'm gonna take a small bird walk to do a tangentially related topic. The Social Emotional Learning Task Force agreed to be a part of, or to put our name in the hat, to do the school climate survey that's gonna be required under ESSA in 2020. As a pilot, this school year, we were accepted as one of 105 school districts in the state to do that. That committee met today to look at the survey and how all that is going to work. So that's an important piece. But one of the things I think that is timely is the two pieces that they were talking about was the emphasis on social emotional learning in the framework, and also the emphasis on restorative practices. It is most likely that that will become as close to a mandate by the board of regions as we're going to get, that, so we are on that right path. So that was the good news. The Social Emotional Learning Task Force is going to lead this climate survey pilot effort. So after the holidays, we'll come back with some more information about that. But just so you know, that's related to the whole safety piece. It's also related to the restorative practices piece. The intent under ESSA of the school climate surveys is for school districts to look at their broader community, their parents, their students, their staff, to see what areas might be working well in the school in terms of school climate, and where are those opportunities for growth. There's a heavy emphasis on the broader community, and I think that's really important, since now we know, based on our last budget survey, most of our community do not have children in school. So, more to come on that. But I just want, that's a little side, little side note.
Can I just ask a quick question? Social Emotional Task Force, is that all three buildings?
Yeah, that's, yeah, Mrs. Robberow does that one. Okay, so we're also gonna have our quarterly, or we're scheduling our quarterly safety committee meetings for January. Any questions on area of safety?
So how, so since, I'm guessing that you're initiating the restorative circles based on this action plan, how is that going?
We are not, as I stated at the prior meetings. The building leadership team is run, is working on that for the building. So right now, we are still in the learning phase, which is part of this book study and the article read. And then the building leadership team will determine the plan of action from there. So we're still in learning.
Oh, okay.
I just want to add to that, that target goal, you know, something that the board agreed on, is something that we wanted to explore and thought might be a good idea for the high school. So that's part of our goals, is our vision and goal statement.
Right, I wasn't here for that, so that's why I was asking.
So that's just being carried over from what we developed at our mission statement.
Okay, any other questions on safety? The next area is curriculum and instruction. We are working on the secondary schedule committee has a very robust schedule of activities. Right now, we are doing the surveys, the teacher surveys will go out next week. The student surveys will be done, hopefully, I think sometime next week. We're working on finalizing that. I'm gonna meet with some people to finalize that some point in time, right? We left our meeting with, with Ms. Evans, Ms. Hammond, and Ms. Gleason. We're gonna work on scheduling that. The teacher survey has been drafted. It's gotta be out again for review before we can send that out. The parent and the student surveys are going out, or, I'm sorry, the alumni and the parent surveys, thanks to people who have volunteered their time at the concerts, to bring that together, to be at a table, and then we'll be doing some Facebook and some social media website advertisement for that. We did add, the committee did choose to add a community forum on March 20th, 2019, at 6:30 PM to review the results and get some feedback prior to the April 11 board meeting. So that's where that is.
Just one other thing I wanted to share with people, a second of the things this committee, I found this out at the concert on, when I was going over there. One of the things they're asking is they're trying to reach out to graduates to get their feedback as well. So there's a link that you can get, I think we should probably.
That's what I just said, we're gonna post it up on social media.
It's already posted.
We're looking for.
It's posted already, and I've already emailed the past two years of graduates, the link.
So if anyone, and those are the graduates, try and make them aware of it, so we can get the rep maximum feedback.
We haven't done our social media blitz with it yet, so there's gonna be some social media around that.
So that's, and it will be on the website for parents to get to?
Yeah, parents, we're gonna, I'm gonna send out an S and N to parents of high schools, because it is only parents of current high schoolers.
Current high schools, not former parents.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions, other questions about that?
Actually, I do have one.
Yep.
How is, how is the information being tallied? Is it just through the, through the surveys and that's generating it?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if it was done by computer or?
Survey Monkey.
Yeah, Survey Monkey. I was just curious.
Yep. Okay, next area is engagement, which is the parent community volunteer program. Ms. Ward and Mrs. Lenz are doing some work on that. And I'd actually, actually would like to ask Ms. Ward to give us a little update on that one, because they're doing some current work.
Excellent. For the, right now for the student one, we have some pilots going on. Actually, Anne Marie and Penny Belteschi have two high school students. And our goal is to have six by the end of the year. We're using, Dina had a program at Funt that we're modeling on. We're calling it a volunteer program now. But given that really neat mentor piece in the contract that's coming, this might be something that feeds into that, because we're kind of thinking about that down the line. But of course, we wanna codify it, and we also wanna make it beneficial for both the student and for the receiving future, so it's a win-win. And then on the volunteer front for the community, it's, we have an application that's been vetted by our lawyers. And we have a current nutritionist from St. Mary's who volunteers on Fridays. That was a, someone who was interested, and so she's our pilot to take that application, to try it. And she works in a first period classroom right now. And so we wanna do, move forward to doing some type of FAQ. And we surveyed the staff of what type of activities you'd like volunteers, community volunteers, to help us with it, and how we can, again, make it a win-win match.
Any questions on that topic? It's coming right along. On the budget area, the budget forms have been updated. I have them on my desk to review, so that requisitions can identify how the proposed expenditures support the district's vision, mission, and values through the board's goal, through the board's goals. And we start finance, regular finance committee meetings of the board in January 2019. Any questions on the budgeting process? So the new addition will be a little checkbox that asks people to connect the budget request to the vision, mission, or goals. Okay, and then the last one is the technology. This is under old business, we actually had it in two places. But the draft plan, the draft PD plan is under old business, and we'll share it a little bit later as a follow-up. And just so you know, the SSIP is still waiting at DOB. We have asked our NERIC contacts to reach out to find out what that is all about. It has been sitting there for seven months. The average time is allegedly supposed to be six months. So we are hearing that maybe it might be a little bit longer. But it's in the Department of Budget, and that's where it is sitting right now. So we're, we've asked some friends to help us find out what's going on with that. Because that's outside of the education department, that's really outside of what we have control over. That's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Next point is student representative.
Thank you. The first thing was students were wondering if they could have water as an option at lunch instead of milk for lactose intolerant people, things like that. Is that a thing we could look into?
I checked with Mrs. Dolan Brody. Water, according to federal guidelines, needs to be available to students. So that can happen, and you have to have a viable water fountain in the cafeteria, which we do. The challenge is that bottled water is not a reimbursable component of school lunches. That would be a significant expense to the food service program. But then I had another thought today, which is, I wonder if we could get, because I think this would be doable, one of those refillable water, well, you know the new coolers, the water coolers that have the bottle refill? I wonder, so I'm gonna talk to Mr. May and Mrs. Dolan Brody. I just had this thought today. I wonder if we could put one of those in the cafeteria. So that way, students who may need to have a viable alternative could bring their own water bottles, and we could do one of those nifty, those nifty water coolers. I don't know what they're really called, I'm gonna call them nifty water cooler. Okay? So I just had that thought today, I was like, oh, we could do that. You see them all around, all over the place now. Yeah, they are very cool. And I think that would be a way to do both. Okay, go ahead.
I was wondering if the library could maybe be open just a few minutes earlier than the school starts, so you can print things if you needed to before class, or something like that.
Yep, that's a great idea. First of all, that's something that also could go to the principal's cabinet. However, what I did was I talked with Mrs. Jones, oh, who is here? Mrs. Jones and I had a conversation about coverage in the library for that time. And what I am proposing to the board tonight is the expansion of a position to allow the library to be open from 7:15 in the morning on, so a little bit earlier even than that. Okay, so if the, if our board goes along with that for coverage in the library, then right after the holiday, we'll start opening at 7:15 in the morning.
Perfect, thank you. Students were recommending higher fall.
First of all, I would like to tell you, Mr. May, I had quite a good chuckle over this, but here's what he's here to tell you, here's what I'm gonna tell you. First of all, we buy it in bulk for the entire year, in the summer. So I shared this with Mr. May, who will look at options when this supply runs out and we're ordering for next year. But sadly, however, Olivia, you and your senior classmates will not benefit from any changes in the product. But he's gonna look at it for the future. Thanks for that.
Locker rooms and restrooms need repairs and cleaning. I don't know much about this, because it's mainly the boys locker rooms.
Yes, it is.
I don't know about that, but. Something could be done about that.
Yep, here's what I'm gonna tell you. All locker rooms and restrooms are cleaned daily. The challenge is that some of our student body does not respect the work of our custodians to keep things clean and in order. Every summer, all repairs are made to the bathrooms and the locker rooms. And sadly, by early fall, items in the locker rooms, particularly ceiling tiles, have been destroyed. So we've asked our coaches and our PE teachers to help us. Then I had another thought. Sometimes you should probably not let me think so much about some of these things. You know how, you know the TV show, the old TV show, What Not to Wear? Not that I ever watched it, but people did. But sometimes, you know, maybe we could do a little skit about how to be respectful of just our school property and our school building. And I would like to say, as a student body as a whole, our respect, our structure in our school so very much. The boys locker room is a problem. And so it's hard to keep replacing things when it keeps being destroyed. So we need to work on that. But maybe at some point in time, a little skit about what not to do in the locker rooms. In the meantime, but just so you know, everything is cleaned every single day. Okay?
Students, all my information when threats are close to the school, just so rumors don't happen when they're never good, so.
So can you talk a little bit about your conversation at your principal's cabinet about this? Because I know you guys talked about it a little bit, right?
We didn't actually.
I think you would like to go for chemistry.
Oh, so you missed that for the conversation, okay. So I'm glad you brought this up, because I think this is an important thing to talk about. But our protocol is to share information only if there is something to share. And as we navigate, and as I've explained to actually quite a few parents, some students, try, explain, talk to with the staff about, or explain it to the staff, the challenge is, we can't control what happens outside. We can look at, is there something that is a threat, is a, something to the school? Our recent incident, there wasn't. But somehow, it got taken on a life of its own. We wanna think about how to navigate that differently, because that was a new situation. It's one thing if something happens and you have to report it, of course we would. If there's nothing, how do you handle that?
So we should cooperate the protocol to let students know that nothing?
That they're, right, which is hard, because sometimes if you say it's nothing, then people take it that there was something, when there was nothing. So we talked to quite a few, I talked to a lot of parents I know, Ms. Gleason talked to some parents. I had some students who were, had approached me, we worked with the faculty, sent out an email, I met with them the next day. But just so you know, there was never anything posed to the school. It was a group of student friends who did not use the best social media etiquette. Other people found, heard things, and it just took on a life of its own. So that's the new reality we have to think about. And I would just like to say that it used to be that our major, our primary job was providing learning for children, for all of you. And while that still is true, that is now a very close second to keeping everybody safe. It's something that we're working on every day. Okay, so yeah, so the idea is a new protocol of what to do when there's nothing. Oh, right, but well, the bottom line is, so Mark, just thank you for reminding me. The bottom line, though, is, even if there is nothing, and we start to hear anything, we run it through the threat assessment team protocol. Even when we find out that there was never any threat made, stated, or anything, that was a really good practice, because it just helps us figure out what's going on. So whether we need to or not, part of that protocol will be, we will do that.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
The band is allowed to go on overnight trips, but the senior class can't for their trip.
So today, I went to our local historian, Mrs. Prime, because I have never had a request in the time I've been here for an overnight senior trip, and asked her just for some information. There is a past history that there have been some overnight trips that have been problematic. So then I went to Mrs. Corona, one of the senior class officers, just to get some information. And at this point in time, it's not been anything that's been discussed at the officer level. So here's a few considerations, though. All seniors would need to be able to participate at no expense to them, if it's a senior class trip. And it has to be inclusive of all seniors. So there would need to be adequate funds to support all students. I spoke with Ms. Corona. She just said this idea hasn't been approached by the officers. And at this point, I don't, the finances probably would not support that idea. The second piece, which is where we would have to revisit, do some work, is that an appropriate support plan for all students to successfully participate in the trip would need to be developed ahead of time. So how do we help make sure there are enough adults, there's enough supervision, there are enough things that students would be safe and there would be no incidents? So I guess what I would say, that it certainly is something that we could entertain a discussion about and talk about, but you have to consider those other things. It would have to be all students in a class, everybody would have to have the opportunity to go. So maybe we could sit down, if the senior class officers are interested, with Ms. Gleason, myself, the advisors, and have a conversation. Okay, I would certainly entertain that.
And then just a follow-up question from our meeting. Are bus drivers allowed to drop off athletes?
Right. No, not at this point. What we have done is this, in the athletic code of conduct, we ask that, it states that it's the parent's responsibility to pick up students. We've asked the coaches to try and help connect players to rides if they need them. I've been here on several different occasions recently, because we've been here one night. When teams are getting back, I have not noticed, I personally have not observed that anybody has had an issue. Okay, so we're gonna see if we can do ride connects with folks? Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, those are good stuff.
Any questions or comments on board? Okay, thank you, Olivia. Next one to presentations on career pathways.
And for that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Gleason and Mrs. Jones and Mr. Harris.
So last year, we started the process of discussing the possibility of bringing specific pathways to the high school. And so a team of people got together, and two pathways sort of came to the front, which I'll, I'll ask them if they wanna share some information about. But the general idea of having the pathway is to give students a program where their academics are interconnected to that theme, right? That it all revolves around, for example, computer science or green technology. And so that everything they're doing in their high school program leads them through that same path. And at the end, it increases their employability. So whether they stay with us for the four years, or they participate in a CTE program, a program at the Career and Tech Center for part of it, they will leave with that employability. And the two areas that we talked about are areas that Lisa Gardula, who's our, who's working with us through HF MBOCSIS, provided us a lot of data about the jobs that are available and the kinds of financial support that would lead to someone working in those careers. So the, what we shared with you is the information that we put in the program of studies, so that our eighth grade parents and students can familiarize themselves a little bit with just what a pathway is, what it means for a student. And then to familiar, familiarize them with our two options, which is the construction technology, renewable energy, and sustainable building, and computer science and information technology. And if you go to the last two, it sort of gives you an overview of what the, what the process would look like moving through courses for a student who either chose instructional technology, and then the next one is the, the next one is the computer science. And so we tried to include some of the areas where we would hope our students could earn college and the high school or UHS credit. And obviously, it all depends. Because if a student comes in having algebra, then they would pick geometry. So some of the things aren't necessarily set in stone. But the courses we reviewed and selected, and some Mr. Harris has already taught, and he's just sort of tweaked them a little bit to, to meet the, this idea. Same thing with CSI, we have it, but it would be a different angle on that, to make this a really functionable pathway for our students. Do either of you wanna talk a little bit specifically about your?
Well, the construction technology, renewable energy, and sustainable building pathway, set it just narrowed down to just building technology or construction technology, it opens up possibilities for other options in careers such as solar, wind power, hydropower. Any of those areas there would be considered energy-based construction for jobs, ranging from anything to an inspector, onsite inspector, to laborer, whether they're actually building the systems, putting the systems together, or maybe just working as a, an engineer designing the systems. We talked about with the solar project coming into, with the school here, maybe that would be a possible option for an internship for some of the students involved in the pathway, as well as, you know, other options of local contractors, right up through to maybe touching upon some other solar companies that install solar systems in the residential aspect. And even GE has their wind energy technicians program located in Missyuna, getting the students involved in that, where they would learn how to service and maintain the maintenance end of the wind power farm you see all, going up all over the country.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning that, because the work-based learning opportunities is a huge part of the pathway. The students start career exploration and workplace tours as freshmen, and then work their way up to job shadowing and internships as juniors and seniors. So they're getting real-life experience in the field, which, again, hopefully leads directly to employment. Or connections as they, they continue their education. Because, again, part of the pathway is earning those college credits, so they would go in ahead of the game. Yeah, no, Tammy, yeah.
So the computer science pathway involves, of course, a computer science internship, but that would be just one component. So for instance, in ninth grade, we're looking at Ms. Evans or another business teacher offering an entrepreneurship class, because, of course, if you invent something, you also have to be able to market it and turn it into a business. So that would be part of the pathway. As far as computer science goes, the internship program, I've spoken with a couple of students, and we've been designing that, and we've decided roughly that the first year of computer science internship would be a volunteer basis, you wouldn't necessarily get credit for that. That would be your chance to explore what we have in our makerspace, and you think of things that maybe Mrs. Jones, who are the wallet, could you please get, help us find this thing that I was hoping to get into? Then 10th grade would be the research year, and a couple of the students and I broke that down into basically four components, that you would research the history of the field you're interested in, and then the second quarter, you would be researching what is the current state of that field. The third quarter, you would be researching what is the innovation that they think is coming in that field, and of course, the fourth would be the proposal you would give for what the project was you wanted to create in your third year, which would be 11th grade, and that would be your building and pulling that project off. And we're looking to, the senior year would be, we could meet with the Chamber of Commerce, where they would do some of the internships. So that would be the CSI core of the computer science pathway. But they would also have courses along with that, the entrepreneur class, there's an exploring computer science course that we teach with math, that is a math elective, and we are looking at, I attended a webinar, there is a computer science AP course that is new and very different from what used to be available for computer science AP. The AP system has woken up. They realized that the only students that were taking an AP course in computer science were ones who wanted to sit at a computer and type in Java, knew that they wanted to be in computer science for sure. The new course involves things like the basic coding course, which was part of the old one, but at the end, the students also have to produce two projects and submit them to the AP board, which is a little more in line with what CSI does. And I think the college board has woken up and decided that just sitting down and taking a multiple choice test is maybe not the best measure in computer science. So that's what we're thinking right now. I do have two students who have, who have been helping me develop this, who have expressed interest, they're freshmen now, so I said, well, that could be your, your volunteer year, but next year, boy, you better just get ready to start doing some research and help with some classes. So that's what we have in mind for the computer science pathway. We do also, as we have for a while, each year, I try to have them go on one college visit, so that they can see what's available in the college pathway, and then we do try to visit a local business in the field of computer science as well, so they can see both of those, and that's also a part of it. That's what we've got cooking.
So give students who are excited about, passionate about a particular area to take that as freshmen and really move with it, or in the circumstance of some of our students who now hearing about it are like, oh, I'm a freshman, but I wanna do it. We'll figure it out. The goal again is to give students the opportunity to take that and make it their day, and have everything they do here really be about and connect back to, how does this improve your knowledge or skill in this area, which again, increases your access to college programs or your employability, depending on which way you pick? And, and the beauty of what they both said is that there are so many different options that students could select coming out of that. And the chamber has, has been helpful in supplying some ideas of what those different kinds of internships have looked like with other programs. But both Mr. Harris and Mrs. Jones have had their students out, seen various things, doing various things, so some of those ideas already exist locally too, that we can take advantage of.
Any kind of questions?
So you're looking at hoping to integrate this into the curriculum here at the high school, or are you doing this in conjunction with BOSE's?
No, it would be here, but both programs, there is an option in the junior year, if the students wanted to go to the Career and Tech Center, a number of our students have over the years in various construction trades, but they're also updating the CTE program to be cybersecurity and computer technology. So if a student wanted to go in that specific direction after finishing the first two years, they could, but they could also stay here and continue on to do courses in coding, or we have some students playing with the idea of Google certification now, those kinds of things. So onsite would be ideal, but that would be an option for juniors and seniors to attend a Botech program.
So our teachers here would be providing that, or is this? Okay, yes, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. This is, first statement, this is really exciting stuff, so thank you guys for doing this, this is, you know, a good opportunity for kids. So my real question is, do you, is this going to be set up for CDOs? And you may not have broached that, or maybe you talked with whoever your counterpart is over at, at BOSE's? So that's one.
Can you just, what is CDOs?
It's a, it's the, yeah, it's the, um...
We're developing education.
Yeah, it's, it's a credential, it's not, so it's a credential for students, like in a path, you know, pathway. So students that go to BOSE's are eligible for CDOs, or even students here, presumably.
Because it's that work-based learning component. So yes, we would track those hours over the course of their time, obviously because it would be so important for their portfolio in terms of applying to colleges or for jobs, but it could also count for a CDOs credential, which sometimes students can use in lieu of a certain part of Regent's name or something like that.
Right.
So we, we, obviously, yeah, we would record all that data so the students could have access to that.
And have you thought about, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to tell you that in the past, a couple of years ago, we have had students who joined the computer science internship program, and because we are so flexible, we, they, we knew in advance they needed those CDOs credits, and we were able to tailor the program to make sure that, that computer science internship and the CDOs credentials matched, and so that they, they actually used their computer science time, which is usually 40 minutes a day, to work towards a CDOs credential, so it is, it fits very nicely.
Sure, and this has the potential, and I don't know if you've mapped it out yet or you're thinking about it, but it, it could supplement a four plus one option too.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Which is, you know, which is, you wouldn't have to take one of your social studies regions, whether it's US history or global, which is, yeah, which is exciting.
Yep.
And so, and, and you, and I don't know if you've looked at, you know, a technical assessment, you know, so that, that's another option for New York State, which would be like a Regent's or whatever career path you're in. But, but this is very exciting, so I applaud you guys for doing this nice, nice job.
Yes. Can I add one thing? First of all, again, I would like to also thank you for the effort that you're making, and I think it's a great opportunity for students. I would like to make one suggestion. I think most students, I think I can say this fairly safely, don't have a clue what they wanna be when they grow up. Took me till I was 37 to figure that out, but, but what, no, but what, seriously, what I would like to suggest or recommend is that you do something in the middle school beyond just giving out the literature to the students and parents, I think it'd be wonderful if we could have some audiovisual stuff, if we could have some speakers come in to talk about these different fields, to give students a real sense of what these are and what they entail, and hopefully, you know, ignite some, some of their interest in it, so that will get more students taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity. So I'd hate to see kids, you know, just, I don't know, I don't know, you know, and then when they're juniors decide, oh, wow, I wish I had gotten into that, you know?
I, I just wanted to let you know that me being a little bit pushy, one of the requirements of the computer science internship programs, you have to teach. And so we have students in that program who have been down to the middle school teaching robotics, teaching Spiros, teaching Edison robots, they've even gone to HFMBOSE, they have taught principals and superintendents at workshops. This is the second year that we've, our interns have taught workshops. I have one intern in particular who told me the other day, his goal is to teach, quote, "15 different lessons at the school before I leave here this year." And he's well on his way to doing that, Ms. Schwab was kind enough to come in and give him a formal observation as a teacher. What was great about that was, we had a gentleman who was here visiting, he was substituting, and he's working on becoming a teacher, and we were talking afterwards about what was happening in the room, and he looked at me and he said, "That was a student?" He said, "I thought that was a college person in here doing their student teaching," like, he's really good. So we do very much rely on the older kids going down to the middle school and the elementary school to teach the younger ones, so that they know what's coming. We've taught code.org, Edison robots, and Spiro robots so far this year, so that is a component of this.
Well, again, I just would like to encourage that whatever we can do to really make it real for the kids in middle school, that would give them the opportunity to really say, oh wow, this is something I'd really like to try.
And last year in preparation, usually the eighth graders come up and do an activity with us to, to start the transition, but we also brought the seventh graders up, and they worked, Sherry Yutow was kind enough to help us out, they worked on their career interest inventory, just to start those conversations about careers, and so we have been working with Sherry as the middle school counselor to think about how we can get them more information and share more information with them, and help them to understand what this means, and what could be available, or what areas might be exciting for them, and, and sort of in that same way.
Well, I just wanna again say thank you, and it's very exciting to see this thing getting started, so. Okay, Anthony, yes? All right. Next thing is school report cards.
Just the highlights. So in front of you, you have two pieces of paper. I think it's exciting. One is the report card summary, so I'll get it started and wrap it up, and let folks talk in the middle. So this is 2018 Kanjari School Report Card. This is information that has already been previously shared with the board and is now public for our community to see. This data is, so one thing I wanna tell you, what you're looking at is district-level data that includes all of our students in all of our educational settings. It is inclusive data of all students. So we wanted to provide you with a summary of the results, and then some observations about what it means. This is the first data set that is used against the new ESF, Every Student Succeeds Act Accountability Standards. And I'm turning it over to Stacy and Chris to talk about three eight. Becky will talk about high school, and then I'll be back to wrap it up.
Looking at six through eight, three, seven, and eight are our strong years, and four, five, and six, we will continue to focus on growth, we'll of course focus on growth in all six years. However, in all six years, we did see that there were gaps between the non-economically disadvantaged and the economically disadvantaged, so it's consistent through all six years. And I look, do a little deeper dive of four and five, what I find very positive is that we see that of our students who took the test, and we didn't have most students take the test last year, we had a rather significant shift from the number of students in level one to the number of students in level two. Remember that last year was just our very first year with our reading series, and so see that shift, we're moving in the right direction, and just to give you some hard numbers is always a little easier. For example, if we looked specifically at fourth grade, while we did have 26% of our fourth graders in level one in the April administration, the year before that was 41%. So we'll take that, we'll keep making those gains with all the hard work that we're doing.
Oh, the numbers Ms. Lord was speaking to were ELA. In math, we saw a really nice increase in the number, percentages of students reaching proficiency in third, fourth, and sixth grade. One of the areas, of course, especially focusing in the middle school, six, seven, and eight, is the participation percentage. For example, in, in math last year, we only had 13 little students take the eighth grade math exam. That number's a little misleading because we do have a, almost half of our cohort takes the algebra exam. So while our eighth grade math test didn't reach the proficiency goal, the combined eighth grade proficiency, which accounts for students in algebra and eighth grade math, we actually exceeded New York State percent, average percentage in proficiency. Excuse me. Science was a really strong point. Fourth grade science, 91% of our students exceeded the average New York State proficiency percentage. Interestingly, in our fourth grade science, we saw the smallest gap in any of the three through eight testing, with students who come from an economically disadvantaged background. 88% of the students who would be classified in that subgroup reached a level three or four, which is proficiency. So that gap from 91 to 88, that 3% gap is by far the smallest gap across the board. Other good, really nice things to focus on in science, the combined eighth grade proficiency was up again ahead of New York State average, so that accounts for the eighth grade students who take the eighth grade science test, as well as the eighth grade students who take algebra. And then overall, the fourth and eighth grade combined percentages, the district exceeded the New York State proficiency percentage at about 81%. In math and, in math in particular, just like in ELA, the big gap that we, we really see room for improvement is in economically disadvantaged suburbs.
Before we move on to high school, any questions about the three through eight?
I, I have one. And obviously, I'm glad to see that there's some significant progress, because that's, you don't wanna go the other way, certainly, but I was looking at the percentage differences between the economically disadvantaged and not. And one of the things that was kind of remarkable to me is the variation from grade to grade in that, in that difference. For instance, in ELA, in the third grade, there was a 25% difference in score, in the average score between the two groups. Fourth grade, 8%, fifth grade, 6%, sixth grade, we didn't have enough people to get any percent. Seventh grade, 28%, eighth grade, 30%. So my question is, is something different going on in the fourth and fifth grade that narrows that difference? I, I mean, or is it just happenstance? I mean, I think that's...
Wait, your small score, yeah, and so...
What were you thinking about? What would be some of your analysis on?
And it just, I would just say, I just wanted to be, same thing happened in math, you know, it's, third grade is 45% difference, and you get to the other grades and it's four, seven, six, you know, so, you know, I'm just wondering if that's being looked at, is there something different going on, or what?
I know, I know at least in middle school, when, when we track our quarterly data for all students, you see a, as they go from six, seven, to eight, you do see a shift across the board, whether it's developmentally, that students start to struggle more with course, with course failures, as well as some standardized testing. I, I don't know historically the numbers in Kanjari, I don't know if that has anything to do with, as students get older, sometimes they're less likely to, nah, I don't know how, I'm gonna put that out, I'll rethink it.
I have a hunch, can I share a hunch? And we could probably, I'm sure we can dive deeper. There was a problem, not a problem, this is, something on my desk today with AIS in first grades, the transient nature that was associated at times with economic look. I really do an exceptional job of children who have passed the CK, and I would love to dive deeper into the data, to see how that disaggregates.
We just see if those kids would have it, be much closer together. That would be, that would be...
If you would allow us time to explore that, I might have some...
Can I just ask a question? Was your question, because we're not traveling, we're not following the same students from year to year, we're comparing the third grade this year to the fourth grade this year, is that correct, this data? So that's not following from year to year, that's who's in third grade this year compared to who's in fourth grade this year? Right, so you could have families that, you know, have third graders and sixth graders and maybe economic, you know, so those numbers would be down, you're not comparing them across the board as they develop, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think, was this such a, such a remarkable difference, I was just wondering, is there something?
We see it in a, in a high school a lot, that you'll have one, one grade that comes with a lot of very high achievers, or a grade that will come through with a lot of lower achievers, lower achievers. So it just depends on the year, depends on the mix of kids, who's there.
But, you know, the thing that I was looking at is not how they performed as a group, but how much, how, how much difference there was between the economically disadvantaged and not. And I was just wondering, is there some explanation for that widely varying difference between the two groups, not necessarily what the average score is? And that was my question. And if there's something we're doing different that's bringing those numbers down, let's keep it up and then do it some more.
It could, yeah. It could also be participation rate. So we know we don't have good participation rates, so we would wanna look at the, at how, who's taking the test.
I, I looked at the numbers and it didn't, there was no correlation between how much opt-out and what the scores were, that was insignificant. Sorry.
No, well, there's a nifty little calculation that they use, that if you're not at 95%, we can go back and revisit that in terms of accountability, there is some other, there's some other magic.
I think it would be interesting to see, I wonder about some transient, that is part of it, or you know, something else?
Or there's something else.
Well, I just think, I, I think it'd be good to kind of like explore your hunches and stuff like that, see if we can come up with some, you know, insights.
Any other questions about three?
No, it's a follow-up for later, so.
And, and also, you know, obviously, we're gonna try to have this big meeting in the spring.
That's what I was gonna ask.
With parents to talk about the testing and all that. And obviously, also, I'll just always focus in, I'm not a big fan of standardized testing. But since we have this data, I think we should get what we can out of it.
That's honestly the huge part, when we talk about somewhere, as I can handle it by next month, that's gonna be a huge component. Is the 95% that we were not hitting really, really impacting our district and we could, we're very close to being a target district because of that.
Right.
So, yes, we will.
All right, so if we can, anything else? Before we move on to the high school results.
So along those lines, and one of the things they do for the high schools is give you the cohort information. So like Patty was saying, when we look at courses failed from one year to the next, we try to say, okay, those ninth graders had this money, and now they're 10th graders and they have this money, so we're comparing apples to apples. The, in part of our school report card, when they look at the cohort, that means it's these students who came in at this time and they all made their way through and were still with us when they finished, they have this percentage as a group. And so that might, at the high school, give us a little more accurate of a view because we followed those students all the way through. So what it tells us is that by the time that cohort finishes, so in a four-year period, even if I didn't reach proficiency, maybe the first time I took a test, when I got some assistance and repeated it, I might have then hit that target. So we have a 91% proficiency rate for ELA for the cohort, and then a 94 proficiency rate in math for the cohort. If you look at the year to year, it looks a little bit different. But again, this is students who over the course of those four years, reach proficiency on those exams. We still see the economic disparity there, that our students who are economically disadvantaged do not reach that same mark, but that's something we know and we have to continue to work on. But again, we have, and in the area of science, since we were just talking about that, including both earth science and biology, the number of students who are achieving a rating in the category, right, is over the New York State average. So we do have areas that we want to highlight and celebrate those successes. In this, in the area of social studies, including global history as well as American history, our proficiency level for both the threes and fours is above the state average. And we know the work that's gone into, to making those things happen, changing the way our kids are prepared in class and doing different things. The social studies setup has changed overall for our students in terms of how their instruction is, so we are making changes to continue to increase those numbers. Now, what I also provided for you tonight is the region's results, because over the years, we've compared it this way, right? We've looked at students who get a 55 or better, a 65 or better, and then an 85 or better, percentage-wise. So I supplied that as well, just because it gives us a little bit of a different viewpoint, and that's what we've looked at in the past couple of years as well. And one of the things we've talked about at Results First is increasing the overall number of students who achieve mastery. So I did the math despite, and we are up 4.4% in the number of students overall achieving mastery on exams. And we went from, and again, the numbers fluctuate, right? We had 538 exams that we gave last year, or the year before, and then we had 593 for the 2017-18 results. So those numbers are getting impacted a little bit, but I will take 4%. Going in the right direction.
Questions that you might have around the high school results?
I have a question about the cohort, but we explained it, so. Anything else?
So just to kind of, just to give an overall interpretation, there's, there are things to celebrate, moving in the right direction. Our areas for growth are increased participation in the three eight math, sign, three eight, excuse me, ELA math and science assessments, and globally, closing the student performance gaps in the area of students who are economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities. So both of those areas link to the ESA accountability that we previously discussed. We don't have a lot of subgroups, our subgroups are students with disabilities and students who are economically disadvantaged. And we continue to work on how to best serve those students in our district who are a growing population.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next up, we have approvals.
Are we gonna do a block?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at it. Is there any, does that feel, do we need to pull anything out, or can we do it as consent agenda?
What if, I think we could do it as consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Not in there that I-
Could I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Motion for a consent agenda, Mr. P.
On your favor?
Aye.
So we'll start with minutes. Any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes? Moving right along, budget transfers. Hey, I have a, I have a question. What is, you transferred some stuff into contractual expenses, what are those?
It's just contractual expenses for the district, so that was for consultant contract.
Consultant contract?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on budget transfers? Okay, we'll move into bills, any questions on bills?
Just because I saw the name several times, and it wasn't an amount that would go with a referee, but seed of milk?
Yes, that's for a transportation contract. Oh, thanks, I was just wondering, I'm like.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to make a comment, somebody put in some explanations, not really current medical, thank you for doing that.
I tried, there was no report that I could-
Yeah, no, but thank you, because some of those I probably would have questioned, but thank you for doing that.
I had a question on the Lawrence General Fund, 56230, MVP Select Care Incorporated. What is that? $4,000 to that.
That's for, they may have charged us with my number.
I just don't, never seen that.
Yeah, it's every month.
I just don't remember. Okay, any other questions on bills? Okay, we have treasurer's report, any questions there? I have one, which is in the general fund. Well, I have one comment first and then a question. I noticed in the general fund that the PTA donated about 6.6,200 dollars in school supplies, and I just thought that was pretty wonderful, that they were able to come up with that much money to donate supplies for the kids, you know, it's pretty remarkable, so I hope that we can thank them for it. My question was, in the general fund, let me see if I can get to it. Almost there. Just a minute, almost there. I'm gonna get there, I'll-
Can you find the page?
Okay, here it is, it's page, I don't know, is it page here? The title is Treasurer's Month Report, General Fund, October 1st to the 31st. At the bottom of the page, it talks about disbursements made by debit, and lists some of, some of the outfits that got it, MVP, HFM, Fuelman, Pitney Bowls, Capital One, Home Depot, National Grid, I'm cool with all of those, they make sense, but then it said deluxe charge. I never saw that.
Those are deposit slips.
Pardon?
Deposit slips, you know, like buy checks, it's all good.
So that's just buy checks? Do we have to get deluxe one?
That's just even the company.
I just was, I said, what? All right, sorry. Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, moving right along, we have. The substitute list, tax collector's report, sorry. Any questions on that?
It just looks like there's still some that's outstanding, but they're kind of- Would you explain about-
Well, maybe explain that report a little bit.
This is a summary that the tax collector does after the last date that he collected the number. So the last two columns show the total amount that is going to be returned back to the county, then they collect it on our cap, and then they add interest to it, so then they'll give us that money in March usually. So the last two columns add up to a little different value.
I would indicate that the interest here is better than what we get in a court test.
3%.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, then the next one is HF and VOSI's substitute list, any questions there? Okay, then seeker resolution. Any questions on that?
Just a reminder, as you recall, in last year's budget, we put in, included a capital outlay project, which is a project of up to $100,000 that was approved by our voters. We get back our state aid ratio in its entirety the following year. This project was to, is to replace some exterior doors at East Hill. Because any kind of capital improvement, CIP, capital outlay, COP projects are part of facilities management from SED, a seeker resolution is required. So our school attorneys have prepared this seeker resolution for the board.
Any questions or comments about this resolution? Next is contract for construction management with Ryerden, Ryerden Management Group. We have the contract, and any questions about the contract? Okay, I have a couple. On the top of page 10. Just get it to the top of page 10. It is 3.3, 1.2, 4. I was a little bit confused about this, they say that, I read it, for the certification of an application for, they're talking about, you know, what's the basis to pay people for the work that's done. And they say the certification of an application for payment, or project application for payment by the construction manager shall not be a representation that the construction manager has made exhaustive continuous on status. It's like kind of an escape clause, and I was just kind of confused by that. I mean, why, shouldn't he be there examining things all the time? Or why shouldn't he be reviewing the means and methods and techniques and, you know, I mean, that's what we're paying him to do. I mean, everything else seemed to have him doing all that stuff, but then all of a sudden, there's this one that it shouldn't represent. Shall not be a representation that is going to-
3.2, 1.2, 4.
It's the top of page 10, 3.3, 1.2, 4.
I'm gonna read that, but then I can read this.
So I just think that, I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't approve this, but I do think that somehow should be straightened out, you know?
Well, if, this is standard contract language, our lawyers wrote the contract, what I would do would be just to ask them for that, like, what's the rationale behind that? Right, so this is an AIA contract, it's the exact same contract we use for the architects, but what I can do is to find out from Gerben and Fralazo what that clause means in the law. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, it's probably fine, but I just kind of, when I saw that not, I was wondering about it.
Well, that can be an important word sometimes, so.
And my other question was on page 19.
Oh, yeah. Well, they didn't fill in that one.
Yeah, there's a, there's an empty space. Where's the initial payment?
And if you will recall, I did not bring all that stuff down with me tonight. There was a fee, there is a fee schedule that was part of Ryerden's proposal, but I will just double check on that.
So I, what I'm gonna suggest is, I'll be suggesting we consider approving it, maybe we should pull this out of the consent agenda, because I think we should approve it pending,
Those changes and clarity.
The answer is some of the changes to it.
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay, Patty?
Yep.
So we'll do a consent agenda for anything else.
Yep.
Okay, any question, other questions on the-
Thank you for pointing that out.
So now we have step, accepting the stock request. Any questions?
I think we should have accepted, but when do we discuss it?
The finance committee is going to be discussing the incoming dispossessment proposals to the board for what we do.
This was a follow-up, we discussed, we presented this information earlier, so that district, the estate of Blanche Richards offered the district a very generous stock portfolio. We checked with both our accountants and our legal team. The board has to accept it, the donation of the stock, and then the finance committee will review the stock request and make recommendations to the board.
All right, I'll be right. Okay, any questions?
I don't know how to talk on this.
Any other questions? Then, oops, just got out of there. Okay, so the next thing is the-
The bus boat date.
Bus boat date. Any concerns about that? None, okay, we will, bus lease resolution. What we've been there. Okay, transportation request. Can we have some explanation for that, it's kind of late in the day?
Yes, well, I asked you-
I told B.
Right, I, this current family transports their children to Fayetteville. There is no change of any bus route or anything, they would just like now to use district transportation, so waiting sets at long effect any change, because the bus goes right by their house, they live in that area, so.
Any questions? Okay, then finally, the agreement with Montgomery County Home Run Program.
This is an update to a previous contract. The county asked for it, so those basic things like the employee, the last two, is not our district employee, it's through section marks, it's a basic early change.
Right, and I highlighted the changes, you know, what I posted.
Any, any questions? Okay, I have one.
That's ready.
The, the term of the agreement is from November 1st to September 30th. The, uh, the term of the agreement is from November first to September thirtieth. It is now December thirteenth. Did it start on November first? Because we're paying them for...
No, we're not, until, until that point when it starts, so...
So I think it should be changed, so that it reflects what it will start.
Right now, the district issue, we have this document. They continue to update it, they're waiting for applicants, and, um, at just the county level, the lawyers going back and forth, and probably one of the vergis with Berkshire Farms. So they just continue to update it. So for now, the new contract, because now that we have gone through a big process, the person has accepted, we're waiting on the county to finalize that contract, so the new person can begin with us. And at that point, it really just is a contract between the, um, county, Berkshire Farms, and just, so the dates will, will adjust. So as soon as they start, that's when we begin paying, we're not paying taxes.
Okay, so we'll pay somewhat less than that figure from starting the...
But it's, but the point, yeah, it's a twelve month, uh, twelve...
Because, well, the, the twelve, it doesn't even add up to a twelve month decision, according to this.
It's eleven. November first to September thirtieth.
I don't have them adjusted, because it is... This has gone through many lawyers, so I, I was saying eleven dollars.
I mean, everything else looked fine, but the dates just didn't...
Well, they need an English teacher.
What could you write on there?
No.
So, uh, the question I have then is, can we approve this without dates on it? And, you know, okay, I think we might be in the same situation as with Ryerden. So why don't we pull this one out as well? And we'll put that, that into our...
We need to add something to it.
Is that agreeable to be?
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, Patty? Any other questions on the home run? Okay, um, can, um, we've already had a motion and a second, so all in favor except for... What? Except for the H and N. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, then we have the H, the contract with Ryerden is, um, with the, with the two things that the...
I need a motion.
And also...
I need a motion.
Okay, motion on Ryerden.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so we need, uh, the initial payment put in, and also that clarification around that "not." Um, so with those provisos, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Okay, and then for the Montgomery County Home Run Program, do we have a motion?
A motion to accept it.
A second.
Okay, and again, that's with the dates being put in and the money being adjusted. Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Alright, um, all business. One-to-one professional development plan.
It's due to file.
Take it away.
With that, Patty, if you could do the second page, please. Um, the first page of the PD plan is, is largely, um, connected to the board goal, or it is the board goal. Uh, we essentially have two parts of this plan. There's the, um, the Chromebook Initiative, which is the actual one-to-one, which is the big part of the SSIP investment. There's also the Smart Interactive Flat Panels, um, which we plan on bringing approximately twenty more into the district. So, uh, the, the Chromebook one-to-one initiative, what we tried to do with both of these plans is really cater it to the users, um, and, and develop a hybrid model. So essentially, part of the training is going to be, you know, shoulder to shoulder, hands-on with a trainer, and part of it is going to be web-based. Um, for the, the Chromebook part of the professional development, and, and this is for, for teachers and staff, essentially, we, we created two pathways. We're gonna have an entry-level pathway and a more experienced pathway. The entry-level pathway is gonna start with a hands-on training, a half-day, real basics, you know, this is Google Apps for Education. This is how you access your calendar. This is how you access Drive. This is how you upload something into Drive. So a very, very, very basic introduction for some people. Um, our staff has already moved to using Gmail for our, for our staff email, so there is at least an initial, um, introduction that's already taken place. Our users that are already doing these things, that they're using Google Classroom, that they're using their calendar, they're already kind of immersed themselves into Google, we're gonna skip that initial, uh, you know, kind of elbow-to-elbow training, and we're gonna jump right into step two, which is a pretty robust, um, online professional development platform. Um, we're gonna be working with a company called Tech, T-E-Q, which is a vendor that we actually buy a bunch of our, our products from. They have a very robust online professional development system. Um, the real exciting part of it is the hours of professional development that you do on this online platform are all CTE-approved. So a teacher who has an initial certification, or a teacher who has a professional certification...
What?
CTE, it's continual learning hours. Um, essentially, teachers who have an initial or a professional certification, they have to, on a five-year basis, do a hundred hours of professional development. All of the online PD in this platform is CTE-approved. At the end of a module, you take a test, and you can actually print out the, the approval hours for those modules. The other really exciting thing about this is the modules can be individually catered. Um, so whether it's for the smart training or the Chromebook training, we can actually cater some of the modules by content area, by grade level, things like that. So while everyone who's a new user might get Gmail, basic Gmail, or Gmail for basic users, as we go further into the online PD platform, you are going to get, say, something that's geared towards elementary school, or something that's geared towards secondary social studies. So they actually allow us to cater certain parts of that, um, professional development, to individual users, which is really exciting, because they're learning things that are, are really applicable to what they're teaching. Whether you start for the, for the Google training for Chromebooks, whether you start in track one or track two, they both end with an onsite, um, kind of capstone professional development. Um, for the entry-level users, we kind of titled the first one, Google 101, the last one, Google 102. For the more experienced users, that capstone is Google 103. Another exciting part of this is that the learning doesn't stop there. The, the entry-level track users can then enter the experienced track, and they have a whole new professional development plan there that continues their, their, their learning on Google. The experienced users, when they leave Google 103, Tech also offers the online training to become Google Apps for Education certified. So if we have those people in district that really want to, you know, jump into this even further and become certified in Google Apps for Education, um, they actually do the entire training program on the Tech Professional Development website. The, the next amazing part of this is we essentially, by encouraging our staff to do that, we're building our own in-house trainers. Um, because we're allowing people to, to take that training regimen to be Google App-certified educators. They're the people who then will train other people in the district, which is, which is fantastic. So the, the Chromebook track really is going, you know, or the, the Chromebook training and the professional development proposal i- is two tracks essentially that is ongoing outside of those two tracks. Something we had, uh, talked about in terms of future developments and considerations, uh, how are we gonna, you know, further our students' training in Chromebooks and Google Apps? And also, how are we going to, uh, to help parents navigate, you know, something that might be new to them? Uh, with the students, there are already things ongoing.
Not might.
What was that?
Not might. Not might be new to them.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't catch myself there. Um, uh, in, in talking to Ms. Evans today, actually, we were talking about just some ideas for, um, for, uh, business and technology in the middle school, and maybe, uh, some different things that we want to do there. Um, you know, the, having business in the sixth grade this year, you know, we've already started doing some of that training, you know? We had a seventh-grade teacher come to me and say, you know, my sixth-grade kids know way more about the Chromebooks than my seventh graders who haven't had this class, that literally had been two months in. So a, a portion of our cohort of sixth graders is already getting that. Um, some of that is gonna come through actual classes as they go through, and some of it's gonna have to come from, you know, acquiring that skill from a teacher who we are now training, to, you know, to have that basic knowledge, to also pass that along to students. And then the parent aspect of it, in, in talking to our, our tech integration specialist, Ms. Goldman, um, you know, we, we were kind of volleying ideas back and forth about, you know, kind of, you know, parent workshops, where we can invite parents in, you know, open up a, you know, a parent Google 101 type of atmosphere, where we can show them what their kids are, you know, using in school. And even if they're not gonna use it for themselves, we can teach them how to use the things that they can help or watch what their students are doing using this technology. So, uh, the, the student and parent aspect, especially the formal parent plan, is something that, uh, we'd still have to work on, but it's something that's on our radar, that we're gonna wanna teach the community, that doesn't have that conceptual knowledge on, on how to use those things. The, the second part of the PD plan, uh, revolves around the Smart Interactive Flat Panels. So the old, the smart boards of old are essentially going away. They are now essentially touchscreen televisions. Um, very similar to the Chromebook training, this would be a hybrid module. Uh, anyone who puts in a, a request or a proposal for one, um, essentially, they would start with a, a roughly ninety-minute turnkey. Your smart board got put up today, this is how you turn it on, this is how you plug it in, this is how you connect your computer, a real basic entry-level workshop. That would then turn into, again, a hybrid online learning module that we can also cater to those people. So someone who has more experience, or someone who has less experience, or content-specific, there's a bunch, um, dealing with specific content areas in the high school, and then also elementary versus secondary, so we can specialize some of those classes. Um, at the end of that, we would do a follow-up onsite professional development, so you have this conceptual knowledge, you've been using it for a few months. Now, what questions do you have? What things can we help you with? You know, let me show you some other things that your training hasn't shown you to, to make those teachers effective users of those interactive flat panels, um, so they're not just, you know, cool televisions or, or cool whiteboards sitting on the wall.
Chris, you're referring to the smart boards that we now have?
We have some of them. Um, I would say, my building only has one. I believe East Hill has four to five. The high school, I think, has somewhere around six to seven. Um, in the SSIP, we are proposing a purchase of twenty more for the district. However, that would be broken up. Um, I was working on with Mrs. Grimshaw a, a proposal form that, uh, is a modified request form, where teachers would propose why they want it, how they're gonna use that to modify instruction and bring technology into their classroom. So they would, they would propose, these are the reasons why, we would look at those, um, types of things. Um, and part of that proposal is, is agreeing that they would go through this training protocol, and, and failure to do so, we, we would even explore, you know, repurposing the board to someone who's going to use it, um, in their classroom. And then also, just like with the Google certification and the Chromebook, the online professional development platform allows people who want to to become Smart Suite certified. So that smart notebook, Smart Suite, that goes along with that Smart IFP, by encouraging and providing this platform for our teachers to take that certification, we're again cultivating our own in-house professionals, our own in-house trainers, so that, you know, it, afterwards, we would not be training whole staffs. We'd have people in-house that could help new people and people who are non-digital natives. Any questions?
When, when are the Chromebooks going out, to, arriving or...
We're still waiting for SSIP approval, so essentially...
Yeah, it's sitting in DOB.
That's a reimbursement account, so once they approve it, we spend our money, they spend the money back. Ms. Grimshaw earlier referenced us, us reaching out to Merrick. Merrick, Merrick actually reached out on our behalf, called the, uh, Office of Budgeting, and they basically said, when the governor approves it on his will and whim, that's when you'll find out. So there is really no schedule, it's not connected to, uh, state ed in any way. It's sitting in the Office of Budgeting, so we're at their mercy right now.
How many are we looking at, or are you...
Round numbers for Chromebooks, roughly eight hundred and twenty Chromebooks and approximately a hundred iPads. The iPad professional development, instead of the Chromebook, for our kindergarten teachers and our first-grade teachers, is another thing that we can cater through the professional development and onsite professional development platform. The training for Chromebooks, this would take place before we have, um, those Chromebooks in hand, because we already have roughly a hundred and thirty of them in the district. Um, in, in touching base with, uh, Ms. Ward the other day, we actually already discussed some days in the middle of January, um, before Regents Week at the high school, um, to try to set up a couple of days where Tech would come up, and we could start doing those onsite professional development, uh, trainings for our, our, our new users, those basic entry-levels, uh, track one users. You're good.
Um, I just wanted to add in the community part, uh, and this is a new development. Uh, the interns that I teach, we do a night down at Arkell Hall a couple of times a year, called the Tech Ambassador Night, where we go down and, and the students help the elderly look around and text and all that. But one of the things that, uh, one of three of our interns noticed was some of the elderly folks are actually losing money. And they're losing the money because their, their subscription to Word, which they know how to use, many of them, has, um, expired, which means they have to pay to get a new, uh, piece of technology where they can do Word processing. And some of the folks that they've been talking to have steered them towards these crazy online things that they have to pay ten dollars a month to be able to do Word processing. And so, uh, two of them approached me and said, Mrs. Joan, we've gotta set up a, a night down there, and we're gonna teach them how to use Google Docs, because they should not be paying for these things. So they will be teaching the elderly downtown at the Arkell Hall the Google Suite. So, uh, that was something that, that came up about two weeks ago. And I have, uh, Eric Elliott is actually spearheading that one, because that really irritated him, that older folks are losing money on something that they can't even agree.
I would look into, um, as a, I don't know if you want to do it per school or as a district-wide, doing some kind of like STEAM festival, so the kid, and then you have specialized kids like in CSI, or, you know, in certain classrooms or whatever, that can showcase their knowledge on, on what they're doing, and it would bring in the community involvement, and it would also show how these awesome technology is being used in our school, so...
Do you know what model Chromebooks are again?
We're currently, we propose the thirty-one eighty series, which is the, essentially the one that we have bought, the hundred and thirty-ish, give or take.
What company are they?
That's through Dell, I'm sorry. It's a Dell thirty-one eighty. There, there's a lot of great options for, there's a lot of great case options for it. It's a, I don't wanna say an entry-level Chromebook, you can definitely buy ones that are cheaper, you can buy ones that are far more expensive. Um, it, it seems to be pretty rugged, it's held up pretty well. Um, Dell seems to be in the educational market, the one that's being used, uh, the most widely. Uh, that's not saying between now and February, Dell doesn't replace the thirty-one eighty with the thirty-one eighty point one, or whatever the case may be, but that's the one that we at least propose.
I just wanted to look up what kind of microphones they have. There's some Visa apps that I'm gonna use for classes.
So all this is in the SSIP, which was vetted by the Tech Committee and approved. We ran up all that through. Just as a note, when we get approval, we really do have to stick to the plan, um, unless things are not available, because if you make any variations to the SSIP, it sends you back to the beginning of the queue we are finding. So we were really very clear and precise on ours, because we knew that we got it in within the timeframe, but if not, you go back to the beginning. It's kind of a very difficult process.
Any other questions, comments? Um, I, I have, I just wanted to say thank you. It looks like a really comprehensive professional development plan, and I'm very excited to see it, you know, to see it, uh, this. One thing, one thing that I would like to, um, suggest, be considered or thought about was, and not, not right now, you know, what'll be the method and the timeline to evaluate the success of our initiative in terms of how it is really being integrated into our pedagogy? You know, and how, you know, how, or, you know, how it's succeeding, how is it succeeding? And I, I'd like to see some ideas about, you know, both, you know, the method that we use to evaluate it, the timeline, and, you know, how we'll assess how we're doing, and how, you know, so that we can make any changes that might be indicated.
It's in the tech plan. We have a, we have a tech plan that has all of that in it, that the Tech Committee worked on. Um, and so what I can do is I'll just upload it for your reading pleasure. It's a PDF with a lot of stuff in it, which you'll want to...
If I can get to that Ryerden contract up here.
It's a true statement there. So how about if I upload that for you?
Where will you put that?
I, I will put it just with my work notes, which I've already done, so I'm just gonna upload it right now, so it is done.
Okay, is there nothing else on that? Alright, moving right along, we have Education Committee. The committee met, the first meeting was basically an or- organizational meeting. What it is, just to remind you, because in our current contract, we agreed to have a committee that would be composed of CUSE representatives, administration representatives, and... administration representatives, and board representatives. And we met and basically came up with some ideas for things and approaches to things that we would want to discuss and deal with. I think it was a very positive meeting, and I look forward to the continuation. One of the things that came up and the notes from, you know, the summary of what we talked about is now on the board.
It's in the library section of board docs. If you go down below all the administrator board notes, you'll see a section that says education committee. The information is there and will be updated as we need.
So, you know, you can just take a look at it. And we'll obviously be having, we're going to be having meetings once a month and we'll be having regular reports back to the board about the issues that we're discussing and, you know, what was coming up. One thing that came up at the meeting, which I wanted to share with you, is that the feeling was that there was only one board person there and that would be good to have two. And everyone agreed that that would be a good thing. And I spoke to, what I would suggest is that Scott be the second person on the committee. I spoke to him last night and he said he would be glad to do that. So, and thus, everyone has an objection. We'll add him to the education. Is that agreeable?
I have no objection.
All right, so that will happen. And we'll be meeting monthly, so our next meeting is in?
It's Thursday.
Thursday? Okay, so that is it for our agenda. Do I have a motion to move it to exec?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening and.